Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Two absent Hernandez Jr. and Johnson.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, the agenda is adopted. We are up to the approval of the minutes from the October 4th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Ray Rower. Is there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And I suppose we shall let the record reflect that Councilmember Johnson's here. Excellent. All right, we have three items on our consent agenda tonight. The first one is, this is kind of a fun one, to approve a Class A on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Esmeralda's Mexican Restaurant, 12759 Riverdale Boulevard Northwest, Suite 102. An application for on-sale liquor licensing for Esmeralda's Mexican Restaurant has been submitted by Louis and Heidi Ortiz. The license and investigation fees have been paid. The police department is conducting the background investigation as required by the city's code. A certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage has been received. An approval of the license will be conditional upon the completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, and Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. So we're looking to approve issuance of a Class A on-sale and Sunday liquor license to Ortiz 7 LLC, doing business as Esmeralda's Mexican Restaurant, located at 12759 Riverdale Boulevard Northwest, Suite 102, contingent upon completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, and Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. The next item on our consent agenda is item three this evening, and that is to set a public hearing date for miscellaneous assessments 2022-2. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals, let's see, all right, let's back up. The city council must set a public hearing as required by state statutes. At that hearing, the city council may refer appellants to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for review. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals will then give their recommendations to be considered by the city council. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on December 1st and make recommendations to the city council at the December 20th council meeting. Staff will incorporate the process in the required mailing to the property owner. These assessments include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases code enforcement violations. The terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed, and the proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. So we're looking to recommend, or we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-97, miscellaneous assessment declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment role, and ordering the public hearing for November 1st, 2022, on the proposed assessment role. And the fourth and final item on our consent agenda is to approve final payment to Burn Boiler and Mechanical Incorporated for Project 21-13, East Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements. So the Public Works Director recommends final payment to Burn Mechanical. Let's see here, substantial completion date was November 1st, 2021. The final completion date was September 28th, 2022. The contract amount was $356,800. Final contract amount, actual project costs were $356,800. The previous payments by the city were $332,745.10. So we're looking at the final payment of $24,054.90. So we're looking to approve the final payment to Burn Boiler and Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $24,054.90 for Project 21-13, East Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements. And that's our consent agenda this evening.
Mayor, Honored.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Discussion? Mr. Stemmott, do we know which building Esmeralda's is going in? I was trying to, I was hoping to connect with Mr. Burke before this meeting, and I forgot.
Mayor, council, I'm not certain, but I thought it was the old Acapulco space.
I wasn't sure if it was that or the old IHOP space, because I figured there's two good restaurants.
Right there, yep.
Module, all right. Excellent. All right, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Item five is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinances 2268 and 2269, I'm sorry, 2268 and 2269, and Resolution 2298, setting the 2023 fees and charges. Ms. Hanson, did you want to, anything you wanted to highlight again? I mean, we kind of covered it last time.
Yeah.
Should I start with, is there any questions of council?
Right. Yeah, before you, just consideration of the adoption of the ordinances that were introduced at the last meeting. Before we can adopt those, we need to hold the public hearing for the increases to the liquor licenses. And there's also a resolution for general fees that were not, are not set by ordinance.
All right, very good. Council have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, then with that, we will open the public hearing regarding the fee increases to liquor license fees. Is anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing for the liquor license fees? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And then we've got three different motions there. Can they all go together, Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2268, revising certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1st, 2023. Move to adopt ordinance 2269, establishing permit and inspection fees for the Building Inspections Division as authorized by Minnesota statutes, Section 16B.62 subdivision 1, effective January 1st, 2023, and move adoption of Resolution 22-98, establishing certain fees and charges effective January 1st, 2023.
After all that work, we're not going to get a second?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item six, conduct a public hearing for vacation of a right-of-way easement and adopt Resolution 22-100, 12307 Wedgewood Drive. Mr. Brody, it kind of seems like you kind of introduced this last time, right?
Yes, so we're asking, again, this is a, as you can see from the map, it sort of shows what's, what the issue is here. It's got an extra large right-of-way, and so the property owner, I believe, has passed away and trying to get, sell the property, and we're willing to correct those right-of-ways, and they're going to give us a new easement later on in the agenda. So just ask that you'd conduct the public hearing and recommend they adopt the resolution to vacate that portion of the right-of-way.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Brody before we open the public hearing?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Just so that I have it, the new property line is going to be basically consistent with the adjoining properties, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we won't have a right-of-way that goes right through the middle of their garage.
That's the idea.
Okay.
Might make the property a little more marketable.
Right. Sounds great.
Any encroachments? Eh, a little. All right, then, we will open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel on the, let's see here, the vacation of a right-of-way easement for 12307 Wedgewood Drive? Anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing on the vacation of the easement? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we're looking for a...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution 22-100 to vacate a portion of the right-of-way easement for 12307 Wedgewood Drive Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item seven is to consider planning case 22-19, consider adoption of ordinances 2266 and 2267, Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area. I think we have beat this thing to death. Is there any questions or concerns from council before we move forward on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take this one.
Go ahead.
There's one other thing we have to add, so. So I'll move adoption of ordinance 2266, revising the Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area and amending city code sections 11-1001 through 11-1001.12, and move to adopt ordinance 2267, revising regulations related to vegetation management and amending city code section 8-504, and add a motion to allow staff for a summary publication of the ordinance 2266 and 67.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Just a question for staff. Since the time we introduced this until now, did we get any comments at all, or any suggestions at all, or feedback at all from the community?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, no, we, we have really received very little feedback from the, from the public.
Okay. And I think that's, that's a testament to the good work that has been done, because the public, you know, a decade ago plus, was quite up in arms about it, but because of all the work and good work that the city has done and others have done, and listening to the community, that's where we are here today, which is, I think, an ordinance that, well, not everybody's going to like everything about it. There are aspects of it that are so far improved over what it originally appeared that I, I can get behind it now.
Yeah, to your point, Councilmember Johnson, 10 years ago, we were told this is what it is.
Right.
And we had rooms filled with people with pitchforks and torches.
Yep.
And I was just holding a shovel. But I was there.
I was, I was there too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Just to make a note, so the publication is going to be a summary, but if anybody wants to read the full ordinances, those would be available on the city website. You could contact city staff, and they would provide, you know, printed copy if that's what you would prefer. So there is a way to get the full ordinance, even though we're just publishing the summary.
So, Your Honor, just one last comment, and that is, to all of those people out there that might be watching this, the ordinance that we have here today is a really good example of how the community, speaking to their elected officials, getting involved in a process has resulted in a better law that is being passed. And so kudos to everybody in the community, those on the river, those off of the river, those that were interested in the issue, on other sides of, of the issues, coming together and talking to not just their local officials, but also staff and the state and the like. So thank you to everybody who had a voice in this process.
All right, very good. Any further discussion on this? We have a motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is to consider adoption of ordinance 2270, establishing licensing fees for cannabinoid product sales. This was introduced at the last council meeting. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Lance Meyer, on this? Any changes from when it was introduced?
Mr. Mayor and council, none.
None, okay.
Um, Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I would just add that, you know, we've talked about this before, and the common sense ordinance where it can't be right next to a school, has to be at a primary licensed place of business, no door-to-door sales, no vending machines, with the intent that this is for, you know, preventing those under 21 from use, and just making sure it's regulated similar to our alcohol in the city. So with that, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2270, establishing license fees for cannabinoid product sales.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. And I think, I think the $10,700 license fee, the $500 investigation fee, and the $150 background investigation fee is going to squelch some of the door-to-door stuff.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Even if they, even if it was allowed.
Right.
All right. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Just want to make a couple of comments on this one. First of all, you know, this really isn't regulated very well at the state level, right? So I want to make sure that this ordinance is open and written in a way, and I think it is, that when the state does take this up at the legislature, probably the next session, that we can amend and get that under control in an alignment. So I'm sure that's what we'll be doing in the future. I think the license fee being where it is makes sense, because, you know, there's going to have to be regulation and SNAP visits and things like that. To the point of 1,000 feet from a school, I think that's kind of close, and I know that matches our liquor registration, but I mean, you think about that, that little shopping center by the high school, you could put a shop in there, and you could be selling the stuff at that SA right on Northdale too. So thinking maybe what the, what the state does when we might want to look at that and match it. And then lastly, and, and I'll talk to my legislature legislators on this too, but, you know, one of the benefits of legalizing this product and, and controlling it was going to be a tax benefit, you know, a tax revenue benefit. And I have learned that this stuff is being sold already in our city, and there is no additional tax benefit for anything. It's just the flat sales tax fee. So I'm just wondering if it is taxed, we might want to put that into our ordinance that the city gets some of that tax benefit. So those are a few things just on my mind with this whole thing. Obviously, it's the responsible thing to do to regulate this since the legislature passed it, and so we'll be looking at those things over the next year.
Very good. Any other comments? We have a motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we are on to new business, and we are going to consider an introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on 125th Lane. Let's see here, I'll bet this, Mr. Hammer's going to cover this one?
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. Council, we've got kind of a substandard roadway. It's very narrow. We did mail out letters to the affected property owners. They didn't necessarily see a concern with it. For me, it's more the townhomes in the back and getting emergency vehicles up and down this road if there were ever to be excessive parking. So it's required by ordinance to restrict parking, and so we're here tonight to do the introduction, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we, this is a, this is a pretty new, oh no, it's an older street, that's right. The street was there, and then, and then they finally figured out a way to develop those homes. That's why the street is narrower, and that's why parking wasn't an issue before. All right, okay, I'm up to speed on this. I do everything about it, but I was, I was connecting the street with this, with the time of the houses, so. All right, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
What's been the feedback in the neighborhood with respect to this? Is this something that they want, or is this something that they don't want?
Two responses out of seven. One was, I don't necessarily see there's a parking problem out there, but I suppose you're going to do what you're going to do anyway. And the other one was, I'm not sure what you're trying to regulate here, but I can certainly understand it's narrow, and if parking restriction is required, I guess that's what we have to live with. So it wasn't positive, go for it, and it also wasn't, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard of. So that's two out of seven.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
So, Mr. Hammer, the way I'm seeing this is more if there were cars on both sides of the roads, it could be difficult for, say, a fire truck to get through. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Versus if you're, if it's just a car, you can probably get through, okay, but we need to make sure our emergency vehicles can get through also.
Yes, and it's consistent with, I think we've probably done a handful of these over the past few years, and they're usually brought up by police and fire as an incident had occurred and we weren't able to get through. This was just discovered and brought to our attention, and we're like, well, why, why wait for an incident to occur? Let's just be consistent with what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? All right, then, hearing none, we will consider ordinance, an ordinance restricting parking on 125th Lane introduced, and we will, so right now, if anybody does have any comments about this, reach out to staff, reach out to your council member or me, and let us know, otherwise we'll be looking at this again at the next council meeting. And so, item 10, to consider an introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on Mississippi Boulevard. And this is a no-parking ordinance on the south side of Mississippi Boulevard from the Mississippi Regional Trail Crossing near Uplander Street for 150 feet to the east and 150 feet to the west. Mr. Hammer, did you want?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, we've looked at this one probably a couple times over a few years, going all the way back to when Mississippi was reconstructed. At that time, we figured, let's see what happens with how we're going to change some of the striping out there. There is a crosswalk, it's part of the Mississippi Regional Trail, it just is a visibility thing at that crosswalk, so if somebody is parked within proximity to that, and people are standing there waiting for traffic to stop, they might have to go out in between cars. And it came back again through a traffic review committee concern, and so I think it's probably the second or third time at least that we've looked at this. There's not a high demand for parking in this area. It is a trailhead, so people want to park as close as they can to make it easy to get in and out, but we're just trying to create some visibility for the pedestrians there. And we've done this enough times that we feel it's appropriate, we're not going to restrict maximum parking, and if you're on the trails to get some exercise, you can walk an extra 150 feet to get to that trailhead.
Mr. Hammer, is there anything magical about 150 feet? I mean, I was just kind, because I thought if it's just to see the pedestrians, that seemed like quite actually a long ways, but just curious if that's...
Mr. Mayor, there's not anything magical about it. I think what we can do maybe is double up on the signs. You've got the pedestrian crossing sign ahead, we can also maybe get a no-parking on there. It is on a curve, so there are some sight angle things to, but it's not like we wheeled it off and measured it and set up our tripods and looked at it. It's, it's kind of a standard we've used.
Okay, oh, that's a standard we've used.
Yes.
That's actually what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's magical.
That's magic. Councilmember Johnson, did you have, or, Councilmember Carlson?
Yeah, I just want to say, I personally have had to do the quick peek around the cars before I've used that crossing, just to ensure that the cars would see me using that crossing when the, when the vehicles are parked too close to it. So I think it's a great idea.
Great.
All right.
I had a short joke in there, but I'm just going to let her go.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Hammer on this? Councilmember Ray Rower.
I just want to add really quick, I'm very grateful for this, and I love the proactive approach of let's, if it feels like a safety issue, let's take care of it before somebody gets hit rather than after, and so thank you for that.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll just add briefly that this one came about late last week, so the mailings have gone to adjacent property owners, we just haven't had any feedback. So we'll provide that when we do the adoption, if there's any, anything drastic that comes up or changes.
I can't believe you'll get any negative feedback from the neighbors.
It's a good change.
Yeah. All right, so if no further questions, then we will consider an ordinance restricting parking on Mississippi Boulevard introduced. And item 11 is to consider Resolution 2299, amending the budget for the Golf Course Restaurant. And we are being reminded again how expensive everything in a restaurant is. Ms. Hanson to cover this, or?
Thank you, I can take this, Mr. Mayor. So before you, your consideration this evening is amendment of the golf budget. Staff is requesting replacement of an existing wind oven with a higher-functioning combi oven, and this is not included in the original 2022 budget. There are two items in the budget, the total 53,000, that staff wishes to delay and prioritize the purchase of the combi oven. So we're asking to reallocate those funds towards this purchase. Our city code requires that capital items are specifically identified within the budget. The cost is $55,003, so there we would also need an additional $2,003 to make this purchase.
Excellent. Mr. Stemmott?
Mayor, council, and just by where clarification, Mr. Tim Anderson, the PJ Pearl Golf Director up there, did want to convey to council, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but that the convection oven that was in the current budget is actually the one being replaced. So that one won't need to be purchased again, that's the one that this combi oven is replacing. And actually, the walk-in freezer project, something that's been on the capital plan for a couple of years, and at this time, they don't feel like that project will need to be completed. They've made some other fixes to address some of the issues that were occurring there. So those two projects will are about the same price as the combi oven, at least in the, you know, five-year capital plan, wouldn't be put back in. And then final mention that the convection oven that's being replaced is original to the restaurant, so, you know, it's in that 12-year mark. Tim Anderson said that that's about the life expectancy for this type of restaurant equipment is that 10 to 12 years. I just checked with him, as it, Councilmember Ray Rower asked me a question prior to the council meeting, and so he was able to confirm some of that information.
I had to do my research, because I'd never heard of a wind oven.
I know, I do too. I legged it too.
So that was, sorry, so wind and convection are apparently interchangeable.
Yeah.
And then combi, now we've got steam and convection.
And convection, yes.
Phew, okay, I don't have any of that at my house.
You don't want it.
Well, I do have convection, I don't have steam, but, all right. All right, any further questions on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Yeah, just to confirm there what Matt Stemmott just mentioned, so if we, we move this out of the 2022 budget, what I'm hearing is that we really won't have to adjust our 2023 preliminary budget for golf operations. This has no effect on there, because you fixed the other walk-in cooler, okay.
Correct, Mayor, council, the capital plan would basically swap out those two items for this, one, this year, wouldn't affect 2023. The only real effect is the $2,000 sort of over the combined total, and the fact that our, our policy states that we have to have capital items specifically listed before we can purchase it, so that's why we're bringing it to council to do that trade.
Okay. That was my only question, how it affected the 2023 budget. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to authorize Resolution 22-99, amending the 2022 golf budget for the purchase of golf club restaurant equipment.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider adoption of Resolution 22-101, 22-102, and 22-103, setting the 2023 fees and charges for the Community and Recreation Services Department. Sorry, I had something highlighted in the middle, and I don't know why. All right, Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, Mayor, council, I can start, and maybe Ryan, if you want to walk up to the lectern, just in case there are questions. So these cover primarily the areas of recreation, CTN studios, and the civic center. For the most part...
Uh, for the most part, the increases being requested for CTN and recreation are standard cost of living, inflationary sorts of increases with a couple exceptions. Uh, the notable changes are in the Civic Center area, where staff underwent a pretty comprehensive review of our costs, um, particularly as it relates to staffing at that center for after-hours events and cleaning, uh, which have gone up significantly over the last couple of years on the heels of not increasing those rates into 2022. Um, so as Ryan and Stephanie looked at those rates into '23 and beyond, um, decided that some pretty significant increases were required, um, as not to heavily subsidize those extra activities, we're talking, you know, the banquets and weddings and things of that nature, um, and, and still stay competitive with similar type of municipal civic center spaces, um, which is important to us and, and making an affordable space for our community. So with that, Ryan, if there's any other detail you might wanna add to that, or any other, other fees, and be good time.
Not this time, if there's any questions, feel free.
Uh, Mr. Gunderson, what did the, uh, you know, the three-day tournaments that are now 1,000, 2,000, and 3,000 dollars, what did those go up from?
So basically, those are à la carte tournaments, so they were 100 to, for resident or non-resident, it was 100 to 150 per field per day, and then we were also adding on restroom cleanings, chalk, and we're adding out a lot of incidentals, so what I did was take the average of that and put it together into a bundled package, so that we're not having to, so they, so they don't have the misconception that they're just paying 100 dollars per field per day.
Okay.
And including that.
But, but what does, the bundled pricing reflects 4% increase or more?
Right around 4%, so it, it's similar in pricing to a little bit more. And what, what we're seeing, too, is if we had a tournament that came in there and they said, well, we only need two fields, they really needed the whole facility, because you couldn't have another tournament there, so there's pricing that has to be included as well as our partnership with the Lions Club to do the concessions, we wanna encourage good-sized tournaments, so it's beneficial for everybody.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gunderson or Stemwell?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-101, establishing certain fees and charges for CTN equipment and studio use, Resolution 22-102, establishing certain fees and charges for use of city park facilities and recreation activities, and Resolution 22-103, establishing certain fees and charges for the use of city center facilities.
Second. Motion by Geisler and a second by Johnson, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 13, thanks, thank you. Item 13 is to accept a drainage and utility easement from Carmen Hines as personal representative of the estate of Dean Klages, maybe, K-L-A-G-E-S. And this is where we're getting some of that, uh, back for 12307 Wedgwood Drive. Is there anything that you wanted to explain, Mr. Brody, or?
Mayor, no, I, I think that is, we're just getting the easement back, so that we're kind of at a traditional, what we'd expect is our easement.
Okay, thank you.
Your honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm happy to move acceptance of the drainage and utility easement from Carmen Hines as personal representative of the estate of Dean Klages for the property located at 12307 Wedgwood Drive Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Geisler, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider a purchase agreement and Resolution 22-104, amending the stormwater budget. Boy, I gotta tell you, when I started reading this, I went, oh no, what happened, are we buying a house? I was like, oh, a sliver of land, oh, good. Uh, Mr. Hammer, Mr. Stemwell, who wants to get the highlights on this, or do you want me to read it?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, council, um, I, I would say it's a little more than a sliver of land, it's nearly 12 acres, uh, it's kind of on the north side of the Gateway Development, right, kinda where 121st turns into Shenandoah Boulevard.
Yep.
Um, there's storm sewer we have in here, there's ditches in here, it's flood plain, it's wetland, there's a little bit of dry land along the north property line, which we would, uh, propose to use as part of that future Coon Creek Trail alignment and just come straight off of 121st, so it, it serves a few purposes, and primarily it's a stormwater use, and that's why the recommendation is to, um, utilize the stormwater fund and do an amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions.
In, in relation to the plat we're looking at, it's a sliver, and for 40, $4,750, that seemed okay. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hammer, on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischowiak?
On, on the map that's shown in our packet, it shows the sliver, and it shows a bunch of, uh, red dots, who owns that property to the east of that sliver? Is that city-owned already?
No, to the east of that, Councilmember Grischowiak, is, um, I think there's the multifamily on the corner, so it's just all open space, flood plain, wetlands, uh, so it's, it's non-buildable land, but it's currently owned by the, is it apartment building or townhomes, right on the southwest corner of 121st and Hanson.
All the way down to Gateway Drive?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I, 'cause I thought the city owns some property in there, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-104, amending the 2022 stormwater fund budget. Approve the purchase agreement with the Zawetowskis, authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the purchase agreement, and authorize staff to execute documents as necessary to close on the property.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson, and nice job with the Zawetowsky, that was good. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischowiak?
It doesn't show in our packet, but what is the, what is annual tax, uh, value on that for the county and the city? Is it, I mean, if the value is only 4,000, it's probably?
There was a couple of back taxes that he had to take care of, it was like 250 or something like that, so.
All right, I'm pretty sure that would've came up, I had a, I would've had a question on that, so I'm glad it came up with council, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. We are at the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting, is anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? No open mic? All right, move past that. We have, uh, reports on our previous open mics. We have response to an open mic, uh, Mr. Gallup on Drake Street, and he expressed concerns over recent changes to transit services in the community. Um, it, this is almost long enough that I think that if, actually, people are really interested, they should just drill in and read it. Is, Mr. Stemwell, you got a summary on this one, do you think? This is the summary.
Yeah. Well, Mayor, council, actually, you know, I, I will defer to Mr. Farnelius, who, um, knows this issue well and could probably provide you the Cliff Notes version of what's going on here.
Mayor and council, I'll, I'll just try to be brief. So we were alerted, uh, at the last council meeting by, uh, a Coon Rapids resident who alerted us that, um, the local bus route, which is Bus Route 805, that connects Anoka to the North Town Transit Center and serves a very large portion of Coon Rapids, that that service level, um, was being reduced. Um, and as I've outlined in the memo, essentially that line is being cut in half in terms of its service, so the number of trips is being reduced, and the interval is also, um, changing as well from one-hour service to two-hour service, so if, if you rely on transit, that's a pretty extensive reduction. I was able to make contact with Metro Transit to get a little more information on why and what happened, um, and it's largely being driven by a shortage of drivers and then ridership on certain routes, and so, um, the routes that have been impacted have had low ridership. They acknowledge that they did not do the best job in terms of communicating this, uh, so the city obviously didn't know about it, the Anoka County Transit staff didn't know about it, and more importantly, you know, the riders really didn't know about it until, really, when it happened, or shortly before that time, so, um, so they sort of apologized for that, but, um, they also alerted that, oh, by the way, there are additional changes coming, so on December 3rd, there will be some, um, uh, additional changes to both the 805 service on Saturdays, and then the express bus service, which is the 852 line that connects, um, Anoka, Coon Rapids, uh, and downtown Minneapolis. So, um, that obviously is something that is, you know, affecting tho, those transit riders, um, they have pledged to do a better job of communicating that to the riders, um, hopefully they'll get additional information out to the public, but those will take effect on, on December 3rd. So unfortunate situation, I think we all recognize, um, you know, that there are labor issues, especially in, in the transit industry, but it's, you know, it is an important service for our, our residents, and it's a service that I think we wanna continue to advocate for to the extent we can.
All right. I don't know if that was any shorter, but it was really good.
Thank you.
All right, and that was for informational purposes, and we've got one more item. We had a group of folks from River North Apartments that were here talking about the, um, the rent increases they've experienced and some of the miscellaneous fees that, that they, um, high fees. And it was a matter of, we listened, and there's really, without taking drastic things that are really, rent caps are really not something that you wanna, that I want to embrace. We can look at incorporating rent caps on future affordable housing projects, um, and the staff did reach out to Ellers, our economic development consultant, to discuss the idea, but that really, really should come from the top down, that should really be, the legislature should say, chapter 42 is going to be limited to this much of a price increase, because if you're gonna be affordable, be affordable. And, I don't know, Mr. Farnelius, I think you did a really nice job writing this up, is there anything you wanted to cover that I, I'm leaving out, give a whole letter here?
Mr. Mayor, um, there were some references, too, about the condition of the property, and, you know, uh, they have an, an active valid rental license, um, we're not aware of any issues with River North Apartments in terms of, um, code, code issues, so, uh, I think, you know, we've, we've responded to the extent we can, um, with, you know, the issues that we can, we can regulate, at least in the near term.
Thank you. All right, um, we're up to the other business portion of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there's lots of fun things going on, so, one fun thing, um, is last Wednesday, they started construction updates at the recycling center, so if you're a user of the recycling center, just beware that things might be a little bit different if you're not a user of the recycling center, you might wanna check out the recycling center, um, but just know that, um, there will be some changes when you get there. Um, we have street sweeping that's gonna be ramping up and will continue till mid-November, um, and just, you know, they're asking that you make sure that your yard bins and things aren't in the street, or basketball hoops, or anything else, to keep it away from the curb as they're coming through, and know that they use water with that, which means that we're using the hydrants, which could result in some brown water. Still safe water, but maybe it doesn't look as pretty. Did I catch all that, Mr. Hammer?
As you did, if I may add, please don't blow your grass clippings and leaves into the street, that is your responsibility, not the city's responsibility to sweep up.
Yes.
I have that one bolded. Also remember, it is against city code to brush leaves, grass clippings, and yard waste into the street, and that includes when you're mowing, the chute can't be pointed into the street. Councilmember Ray Rower?
I would just like to add to that, it's, uh, very detrimental to the environment, because wa, when it rains or snow melts on city streets, it picks all of that up and carries it straight to our storm sewer, which is gonna go straight to our creeks and then our rivers, and it brings the fertilizer and all of that, causing algae blooms in our beautiful land of 10,000 lakes that we don't wanna have, so, um, another reason why not to blow it into the street, thank you.
So then, something more fun than streets, street sweeping, um, this Saturday, um, is Rocky's Pumpkin Patch at Sand Creek, um, from 10:00 AM to 1:00, so we, lots of fun things for the kids to do, and every, all the kids get a pumpkin, so I know, if, they've had it a couple of years now, um, and it's been a real fun time for all the kids, so, get out there and do the pumpkin patch, and then we have?
Hang on, let's not move on beyond from that one yet.
Okay, you wanna do more on the pumpkin patch?
We have 2,000, 2,000 pumpkins to give away for free, um, and then local organizations like CRA and different community organizations that serve the youth set up like trick-or-treating out there, so there's lots of, uh, lots of candy they're giving away, volunteer groups and more, um, and there will be a giant slide, bingo, they'll be playing musical chairs, wait a minute, Councilmember Carlson, will you be calling the bingo again?
I will be calling bingo, Mr. Mayor, and I'll prob, I'll try to improve my Halloween jokes.
Oh, that's right.
And he'll be handing out pumpkins, I'm sure.
The kids, the kids have to sit through dad jokes. Um, they'll be playing musical chairs, there's inflatable obstacle courses, face painting, free photo booth, pictures will post on our Facebook page, prizes, giveaways, candy, um, costumes are welcome, if you dress up, you could win a prize, and concessions will be sold by the North Star Lions Club, um, it's really, it's a great event, 10 to 1 at Sand Creek Park on Saturday, October 22nd, make sure you get the kids out there, dress for the weather, I think it's gonna be nice, though. So, all right, now you can go to.
Okay, so then the next one is next Thursday, the 27th, I think that's next Thursday, yep, um, the open, there's an open house on the 610 interchange, which is at East River Road and 610, where we're gonna look at making that a full interchange, because right now you can get off of 610 to East River Road, or you can get on to 610, but you can't do the other two directions, so that's gonna be at the Head Start ACCAP Building on Foley Boulevard, 9574 Foley, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Mr. Hammer, is there anything else you wanna add for people to come out to that event?
Uh, I think you covered it very well, if they wanna learn more before they come, they can certainly go to the city website and search it, and there's a very thorough history going back several years, um, on how we arrived where we are today.
And then, um, at City Hall, there is absentee voting, so if you need, can't be able to vote on Election Day, you can vote early, you, right now, it's voting as an absentee, so they'll fill out the form and you get your ballot, and they'll put it in the envelopes for you, that's here at City Hall. Ms. Lenz, Mayor, what is the time that voting is open during the day?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, we're open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and then we will have one Saturday, November 5th, where we're open 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, if you need a Saturday timeframe.
Okay, and then that will be open all the way up to Election Day, is that correct?
That's correct, and we do start the direct balloting process on November 1st, so if you'd like to put your ballot directly into the machine, rather than do the envelope process, that begins on November 1st.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Other business to come before council this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischowiak?
I'm just noticing, um, the road condition out here on Robinson Drive, I think just, uh, just east of Hanson there, I think there's a new development going in, and there's a big gouge across the road between the clinic and that development, and there's a pretty big dip there, I was thinking maybe, uh, if the city or the contractor could put a bump ahead sign, or maybe fix that, repair that roadway, it's, uh, it's getting dug out pretty well. I don't know if that's.
Mr. Hammer, did you wanna make a comment about those contractors?
I was just gonna say, I turned off of Hanson coming here tonight, and I experienced the same bump, and as soon as I sat down before the meeting, I already sent a message out to say, what's the status, if it's gonna sit for a while? Fix that, and by the way, we want it paved before winter.
I've, I've noticed they've been kind of
Thank you.
Dealing with that for a while, though, I think the last time I was on Robinson Drive, there were some people out there on the roadway, I don't know, seems odd.
Drive, there were some people out there on the roadway, I don't know. Seems odd.
All right. Perfect. Any other business to come before council?
Do adjourn.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.